I call the meeting of the Select Board to order this evening, Tuesday, June 6, at 7:05 PM. A motion to open the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
I believe we have to do a roll call because Lou is online, so Mr. Gito.
Yes.
Mr. Carrera.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cave.
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky.
Yes.
And I am here. Roll call vote. Mr. Gito.
Yes.
Mr. Carrera.
Here.
Vice Chair Cave.
Here.
Mr. McCrisky.
Here.
And I am here. In accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration of June 16, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to public board and town meetings and recently extended until March 31, 2025, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meets. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if the live broadcast or livestreaming is unsuccessful. Times or approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chairman's discretion. And with that said, I will take an item out of order, and that is item number seven, and it is the Board of Registers. There are two vacancies. And vice, we have an issue with process. Vice Chair Cave, can you shed a little light? We will have to table this to another time.
Yeah, sure. Give me one second. I just want to get the law. So, Madam Chair and members of the Select Board, of the appointments that we're doing tonight, I think this is the only one that actually has a requirement that's dictated by the master general law, and I want to make sure I get the right information to you. So this is, I think it's Chapter 51, Section 15. Get that open. Yeah, the master general law says, "Acceptance provided in Section 17 shall be in every," I don't know where we, this is kind of a long, let me make sure I can get the right, the exact section of it. Okay, so, second paragraph reads, "As the terms of the several registrars expire and in case a vacancy occurs in the Board of Registrars of Voters, the selectmen or the appointing authority shall so appoint their successor, the successors, that as nearly as possible the members of the Board shall represent the two leading political parties, as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 50, provided that a city or town need not be enrolled in a political party and provided further that in no case shall an appointee be made as to cause a board to have more than two members, including the city or town clerk of the same political party. Every such appointment shall be made in the town by the selectmen or the appointing authority from a list to be submitted to them by the town committee of the political parties from members of which the position is to be filled." In this case, the law requires that we actually reach out to the Republican and the Democratic Town Committees of Stoughton and have them provide us with a list of applicants. And from that list, we can choose up to two people from each party, but no more than two people from each party. Just to read on. So, "Every such appointee shall be made in a town by the selectmen or the appointing authority from a list," just wrote that. To that, sorry, "from a list to be submitted to them by the town committee or the political party from the members of which the position is to be filled, containing the names of three enrolled members of such party resident in the town, selected by a majority, do a vote at a duly called meeting at which a former president of such committee, and every member of the Board of Registrars of Voters shall serve until the expiration of their term." I think I've covered the main part of it. I don't think there's anything else. "If the chairman of the town committee has not submitted such a list to the Select Board or the appointing authority within 45 days after the notification to said chairman by certified mail, the selectmen or the appointing authority shall make said appointment without reference to such a list." So, we have to get, request a list from the town Democratic and Republican Town Committees, and we have 45 days to receive a list. If we don't receive a list in 45 days, then we can appoint somebody else, but they get the first bite at the apple. And that was a step that we had missed in this process, so we just need to reach out to those two committees, request a list, and then they have 45 days to provide a list, after which point we can appoint somebody. If we don't receive a list, I think that the, I know there's one current person applying for this position, I think we should still hold on to their application. If nobody, if one of these committees doesn't provide a list, then she is certainly eligible to serve, and we can appoint her, but we wouldn't be able to do it tonight. So, apologies for the long-windedness, but I just want to make sure that we don't err in doing this, and so we'll just have to table this for now, so I make a motion to table until we've received, or until, I guess, the time elapses during which we have to wait for a list from these town committees after we've requested one.
All in favor? Mr. Gito.
Yes, this is only for the Board of Registers. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Carrera.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cave.
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So, this is only for Board of Registers, and the only applicant we received was Althea McHane, McLean, I'm sorry, McLean. That's what's taken.
McFarland.
McFarland.
McFarland. So, apologies to Ms. McFarland. Your name is still, you're still an applicant, and we will be considering you as an applicant when we pick this up again.
What was that?
Sure. So, the only seat that we have to put table for now, the only appointment we have to table for now, is for the Board of Registrars. Althea McFarland was the only applicant, but we have to go through an additional step according to master general law, and so we'll have to table this for now. But your application is still valid, we'll still consider it when this comes back up again.
All right. Moving right along, back to our standard agenda, which is item number two. Select, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, yes. Please, let's, if you're able, let's stand and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your power for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving right to our agenda number two, Select Board comment. Seeing none. Moving to item number three, Town Manager comment.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Very quickly, you have before you a manila envelope. Contained within that package is the information that we promised you regarding the water sewer and rate hearing a week before the hearing. So, I look forward to sitting down with members of the Board. Mr. Carrera came in and saw me on Friday, went through this material, but this will answer many, many questions, and then we can discuss what other questions you have one-on-one. So, that's this package in front of you right now. The second thing, Madam Chair, I'd ask to vote to extend the period of negotiation for SMAC. We're having difficulty getting the two attorneys on the same calendar, and as you know, I was planning to be out this week for some surgery, and that was extended till the 20th, so we didn't have this week in the negotiating calendar. So, I'm asking the Board for a two-week extension to get that negotiation completed on the SMAC contract.
Madam Chair, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. McCrisky.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cave.
Aye.
Mr. Carrera.
Aye.
And Mr. Gito.
Yes.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Madam Chair, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Coulter, we have to cancel the capital project plan meeting. Can you address that? And did you reschedule it, or give us some kind of context and heads up?
The confusion and the complication is we're trying very hard to get the school input on the four-year capital plan. Everyone who has read the plan feels it's incomplete until we have the school projects in there, so we have rescheduled it several times through no fault of the schools, just waiting for that information. It was determined that it will not be included until the new superintendent comes on board. We failed to notify everybody in a timely fashion that it has to be put off until we have the school capital plan, but it will be put off until we have the school capital plan. I can confirm now, the rate hearings for next Thursday are confirmed. There'll be no confusion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for asking, Madam Chair.
Quite welcome. Moving right along to Citizens' comments. Are there any comments from our citizens? With there being none, I'm looking online as well, seeing none. Moving right along to item number five, Consent Agenda. Does anyone want to pull our Consent Agenda item? And that is approval of open meeting session minutes of April 18, 2023, A, or B, Water Connection Application, MJD Escavating Incorporated at 19 Camden Street, or C, I can barely see, Quit Claim Deed Parcel Depicted on Map 103 Lot 9 to T.L. Edwards Incorporated, and D, Acceptance of Donation from Harbor One Bank $250. Does anyone want to pull any of these items?
I'd like to pull item number D, or letter D.
Are there any other items? A, so item A has been pulled, and item D has been pulled. Okay. Who would like to go first?
I'll be very quick, so if I'll just jump right in with item D. I simply wanted to pull this just to thank Harbor One for making the donation. I think in the time I've been a member of the Select Board, I don't recall having seen a local company or corporation donate to any of our accounts, and so I just wanted to thank them for doing this. It's rare, and it's for a very good cause, and I just wanted to express my gratitude to Harbor One for the donation.
Thank you very much. And I too want to thank Harbor One Bank, that is very generous. How about?
You move to approve the Harbor One Bank donation.
Thank you. Can I get? Okay. How about A, Mr. Carrera, approval of open session meeting minutes of April 18?
Are we going to, are we going to accept the donation?
Yes, we are. I believe we are. Mr. Gito.
When it gets.
Okay.
And we, Mr. Carrera had a question on the meetings, the item A, and then we'll approve all at the same time.
Good enough. Thank you.
Looks like something wrong with your mic.
Madam Chairman, I did read the minutes, and on page two, where it says, "Mr. Carrera added that he was always taught the best way to avoid improprieties is to avoid the issue." I want to add in there some language so that people understand what I meant by it, and I have it written down when I took.
Oh, sure.
What I said at that meeting, and I'll bring them to Jilda, and then if she wants to type them up or just add them in later, then we can revote it, but I want to put what I actually said in this.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah, that's okay. Did you want to do it now and then?
No, I haven't finished what I wanted. I want to take it from my notes in here, put it down proper, and not shorthand, but laid out so that you understand what I said that night, too.
Okay.
Motion to table item number A.
Second.
Okay. So, before we move forward, Jilda, what is our timeline on getting these approved? We're still within compliance, is that correct? Okay. Then we have it, a motion to table and second. So, all in favor? First, we start with Mr. Gito to table.
Yes.
Mr. Carrera.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cave.
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. That is to table.
Thank you.
So, items, a motion to approve items B, C, and D, please.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda items B, C, and D.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. McCrisky.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cave.
Yes.
Mr. Carrera.
Yes.
And Mr. Gito.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So, those have been approved. And moving to item number six, Interdepartmental Transfer from the Police Salaries to Town Council Expenses.
Madam Chair, thank you through you. As you know, it's in the last two months of the year we can transfer from surpluses in one department to deficits in another department. We've had a busy, very busy year in terms of legal activities. As a result, we have overspent that budgeted line items, so we're looking to transfer the needed amount from the police department surplus to the legal deficit, and the only change that was made today to your packet, and that's why you have a revised interdepartmental transfer request, is we needed to hire an attorney for $4,500 today to review the Verizon contract, which is up for renewal at the end of June, and we hired that expert counsel who specializes in cable contracts to do that analysis and negotiate the deal for us. So, that $4,500 is the difference between what you had in your packet and this revised packet you have in front of you right now. And this is the estimate to bring it through year-end based upon the run rates of Labor Council and me Talaman on the standard $14,000 a month. Thank you.
To my fellow Board members, are there any questions on the interdepartmental transfer?
Motion to approve the interdepartmental transfer from police salaries to town council expenses per the revised document we have.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. McCrisky.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cave.
Aye.
Mr. Carrera.
Aye.
Mr. Gito.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Moving right along to item number seven. Vice Chair Cave.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, just before we move into some of these appointments, let me start by thanking everybody who has applied for an appointment. Our town government relies on people volunteering for these boards and committees and commissions, and I'm grateful for you willing to volunteer your time. We have a number of boards and committees for which we have more applicants than we have positions, but there are many cases where we have exactly the opposite, either more vacancies than we have people applying, or the same number of vacancies as we have applying. I would like to, in order to save a little bit of time here and provide, keep people from waiting, I would just like to make a motion to appoint, I think in all these cases, these would be incumbents from previous years, in cases where we have that second condition where there are no contested seats. So, I make a motion to appoint Artis Johnson to the Borderlands State Park. Motion to appoint Max Pachelli to the Cultural Council. Rachel Lazarus and Susan Zbinski to the Library Trustees. Joseph McCrisky to the Norfolk County Advisory Board. And Emile Barbosa to the Zoning Board of Appeals alternate position.
Vice Chair Cave, I didn't hear you mention Equal Opportunity Committee.
We have three applicants.
Okay.
But two vacancies.
For two vacancies, okay. So, let me check those again, please. Can you repeat?
Sure. So, the motion was to appoint Artis Johnson to the Borderlands Park.
Got it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did miss one. I missed an important one. Michael Hardman and Charlotte Mullin to the Community, sorry, Commission on Disabilities, apologies for that. Max Pachelli to the Cultural Council. Rachel Lazarus and Susan Zbinski to the Library Trustees. Joseph McCrisky to the Norfolk County Advisory Board. And Emile Barbosa to the Zoning Board of Appeals alternate. Those are all incumbents who have non-contested seats, and so my motion is to appoint them back to this.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. McCrisky.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cave.
Aye.
Mr. Carrera.
Aye.
Mr. Gito.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So, thank you, everyone, for, whose name was called, for attending tonight. Moving right along, Vice Chair Cave.
So, we'll start at the top. Board of Assessors, we have two applicants. We have Your Majesty Gilmore and Stanley Zoll. I'm not sure if we have them either online or here in the hall. Are either of the applicants here? Okay, so the applicants aren't here. We just consider it based on the applications alone.
Motion to appoint Stanley Zoll.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. McCrisky.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cave.
Aye.
And Mr. Carrera.
Aye.
Mr. Gito.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So, Stanley Zoll.
Next, we have two applicants for the role of Constable, Ben Pinkowitz and Edward Starr. Are either of those gentlemen present? Sure, you're coming right up. And there's a little button on the microphone, just hit that screen.
Good evening.
Can you just tell us your name?
Ben Pinkowitz, 536 Highland Street.
Perfect. Let me get your application up.
So, I guess I would have qualified as an incumbent, but the, it was last June, not this coming June.
Yeah, that's what I was checking. I know, I remember we had one applicant who had in the past been a constable, but lapsed, and that they were reapplying.
Correct.
For that same role.
That's me.
Okay. I'll just ask the one question, is there, your application had lapsed, and you're reapplying, obviously, you're competent to do the work. Was there a reason for lapsing? Did you choose not to do it, or?
It was essentially just a clerical error on my part. I thought it was through June of '23, and it was through June of '22. Do, you know, with COVID, it was very quiet on, you know, with the, when Zoom became a thing, certainly the workload was reduced, and I found myself kind of backburnering it, if you will, and came in to re-up and realized I was one year past.
Fair enough. Does anybody else on the Board have any questions? Seeing none, I make a motion to appoint Ben Pinkowitz, Constable.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. McCrisky.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cave.
Aye.
Mr. Carrera.
Aye.
Mr. Gito.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome back to the team. And thank you very much for your service to the town.
We'll pay attention this time.
I know. We've all been there. Is Edward Starr available? Without him being present, I think it'd be appropriate to table his application for, see if he's able to come in and speak. It's kind of an important role, not to give these things out to people who don't show up. So, I make a motion to table that application.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. McCrisky.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cave.
Aye.
Mr. Carrera.
Aye.
Mr. Gito.
I read his application. I mean, I, no. I would like to suggest on these vacancies for Constable, we have a sheet that includes the Social Security number of the applicants.
The what? The, I'm sorry, Mr. Gito, I did not hear you have, I.
The applicants for.
Constable.
Constable require that they fill in their Social Security number, and I think that it would be appropriate to have people provide that separately as opposed to something that goes online.
So, I think we should run that by Town Council, so we'll.
This department gets that for the query check that's required.
I'll ask Mr. Coulter, would you mind reaching out to Town Council to see if we can modify this application to not, to not show the Social Security number or somehow obfuscate it so that, so as to preserve the applicant's, you know, information.
That's private information.
Private information.
Uh-huh. And I was, I believe, when they go through the query check, I was just checking with Mr. McCrisky, that they have Social Security numbers. It's one of the requirements when they go through the query check.
Yeah. Maybe nothing we could do about it, but.
No, we can do about it, something that gives them the opportunity to submit that separate from the application that goes online.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
I'm sure we can.
All right. So, moving right along, so Mr. Starr has been tabled because he was not in attendance, and I know it's become our practice, especially for Constables, to be in attendance when we discuss appointment to these positions.
The next positions available are for Counsel on Aging. There are four vacancies listed. As our Select Board Secretary has informed us, it's in part of this package, there was a vacancy, there was a retirement or resignation that happened after these applications were sent out, so there's actually a fifth opening as well for this position, for a position that's two-year position. So, we have four vacancies, and we have four incumbents, but there's also a fifth vacancy for a two-year. But there's also a fifth vacancy for a two-year term. And we have two applicants who are non-incumbents for whom they're eligible for that position. So I would personally, I'm going to start by making a motion to reappoint for the four vacancies listed on the, on this. Actually, never mind, I'm going to take that back. There's no reason why I should go ahead and do that. We should probably speak to each individual and, and here. Was it, yeah, sorry, sorry, I got ahead of myself. Little lack of sleep here. So my apologies. Hello? If you hit the button, there's a little, it'll show a green light if you hit the button right next to the bottom. So thanks for joining us. Could you just tell us your name and you're interested in continuing to serve on the Council on Aging?
I'm Joanne Callanan. I am interested in the Council of Aging. I think they're a fantastic group of people to work with. I do Meals on Wheels and so forth. And I enjoy being on the board. I've been on two years and my time's up, so gotta reinstall.
Perfect, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
No, it's just nice seeing you, Joanne.
Perfect, so thank you very much, and we'll move on to the next. Eileen Kildorfer. I apologize. Kirchtorfer, apologies. I know your daughter and your son well, and I, for some reason, I still.
Eileen Kirchtorfer. And I've been on the board for, I don't know, a very long time, over 10 years, I'm sure. And I love the Senior Center. I do a lot of volunteering over there. And it's my other life besides home.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Carrera?
It's a tribute to Eileen. I know her as Bunny.
Everybody knows me as Bunny.
Everybody speaks so well of her when you, when you talk to people. It's always, oh, Bunny does this, and it's the one. So I just want to say thank you for what you do.
Much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, am I on?
Yeah, welcome, you're on.
Okay. Ellen Lash, I've lived in Stoughton for about 35 years, so now I'm a senior in Stoughton. So I want to make sure everything works well for seniors. This will be my third term. I started out on the COA Board when I was a Shine Counselor. That was my volunteer position. I don't do that anymore, but I do very much enjoy working with the board and, you know, being aware of what seniors' needs are in the town.
Excellent. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions, it's nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. The next on this list is Lauren Morris.
Nice seeing you.
Nice seeing you too.
Greetings, if you don't mind. You are not an incumbent, but we'd like, so we'd like to know a little bit more about you. Give us your name, you're interested in the Council on Aging, and what you'd like to do on the Council on Aging.
Am I on?
You are, you might have to pull a little closer.
Lauren Morris, Bradford Street in Stoughton. I want to become involved with the Council on Aging. I did run for Select Board, and that was my priority, was the seniors and the veterans. And I think this would be a great place for me to get started and get involved. I'm a nurse, I've been a nurse for 40 years. I work with the elderly all the time. I understand what they go through. And I understand the needs that they have, a lot of them, that are, the seniors that are in need. I feel that we need to do more outreach to seniors that maybe aren't having any issues, just to kind of feel them out so they feel more comfortable with reaching out to us if needed. My mom has Alzheimer's, she's been living with me for eight years, so.
Excellent, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Great, thank you so much.
Thanks.
My name is Boyd Walls. I live at 111 Birch Street in Stoughton. This was my first year on the committee, and I enjoyed it very much, and I would like to continue.
Excellent, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? No questions. Thank you so much.
Hi.
Hello. You are, so you are also non-incumbent, so we'd just like to know a little bit more about you, your name, your interest, what interests you about working in the Council on Aging?
My name is Jane Weiner. I live on 101 East Vanstone Road in Stoughton. And I just recently started coming to the Stoughton Senior Center, and I've been participating in activities. And I thought it might be nice to get involved, and volunteer, and maybe even bring some new ideas to the council. So that's why I'd like to apply for the position.
Excellent, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Before we go on, I actually would just like to take a moment of personal privilege and mention to the members of the Council on Aging that your newsletter is, I think, one of the best this town produces. It's really fabulous. I was actually looking at it just the other day when I came in here. I know you guys always give us a copy of it. And I'm just always impressed by how thorough it is, how thoughtful it is. Really great work. And so just for the members here who are interested in renewing their appointments, but also for the members who are not here, I just wanted to express my gratitude for the really excellent work with Communications. I think it's one of our better communications outputs from the town at all levels. So I just really think you guys deserve our gratitude for it. Okay, so we have, we have four seats, actually five seats. One is a slightly shorter term. And we have six applicants. Not sure how you would like to proceed. We'd probably begin by having people make nominations.
I nominate Joanne Callahan. Want to do one at a time?
Okay, one at a time? That makes sense to me. Okay, so we have one nomination of Joan, Joan, sorry, Joanne Callanan? Callanan, sorry. So all in favor of Joan Callanan?
Aye.
All right, I guess we have to do roll call. We'll do Joe McCrisky.
Aye.
Ms. Roberts?
Aye.
Mr. Carrera?
Aye.
Mr. Gito?
Aye.
I vote yes as well. So Joan is on. Any other nominations?
Nominate Lauren Morris.
Lauren Morris?
Yes.
I nominate Eileen, okay, I'm gonna butcher the name, Kirchtorfer.
You got one more after that, right?
That, they're.
Four and then a two-year or something?
Correct. And, yeah, I would like to nominate Ellen Lash. That will give us all four of the seats, five of the seats, assuming these all pass. We'll also have one with, I think, a shorter, a shorter seat. And so.
We have nominated all of the people aside from Jane Weiner, so I will nominate Jane Weiner. I mean, I don't know how we're going to proceed here, but.
We're gonna vote them one at a time.
Yeah, vote them one at a time.
Okay.
Madam Chair, they've all been nominated, duly nominated, and so now it's just a matter of voting on each candidate.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so for the, for the first available seat of, with a, I don't know how long the term is, but it's a full term, we've already voted Joanne. And so for the second, the second seat, full term, we have, every other applicant has been nominated for that position.
I think you have to offer the long-term ones to the incumbents if the incumbents have been nominated. So you go down those, and then the, the ones that weren't on before will be for the spare seat. That's the proper way.
I'm in favor for that.
I am too.
In which case, would it make sense to vote them as a, as essentially a slate?
You could almost vote them as a block if you wanted to.
Yeah, so for the, for the three remaining full terms, is, take a vote on appointing the other incumbents, Eileen Kirchtorfer, Ellen Lash, and Boyd Walls to those, those terms.
Madam Chair, may I?
I'm losing this.
I would recommend against voting a slate, each of the individuals, I believe, should be considered as individuals.
Yeah.
Voting a slate takes the will of each voter. It takes the decision out of the, out of the Select Board's hands. I think it's appropriate that they be voted individually. My recommendation, that's all.
Perfect. Okay, so then we'll just, we'll go down the line. We have the second available seat. And I'm going to, to.
Please vote, Chair Cavie.
I'm losing something here because you're mentioning terms and such. I don't see anything here that I have. I have Council on Aging, four vacancies. It shows me an asterisk next to the names on the incumbents.
Yeah.
I don't see breakdowns of terms here.
So the, that's where, what I'm referring to is actually, I'll find you a page. You have the digital copy?
Yes.
So I'll give you the.
Where is it?
It's in the, it's in the backup that we have.
Back, all right, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the agenda items, and it doesn't have it here.
Yeah, yeah, there was a note added afterwards, and it's in our backup.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna, I'm doing electronic, but I just stay with this then. I didn't know I'd have to go to the front, to the back, to the right.
Yeah, it's no problem, it's no problem.
All right, thank you. Okay. Okay, so then the. Oh, okay.
So we had a resignation.
Okay, yeah, okay, so we had a resignation. So how many vacancies do we have at this point?
Five vacancies.
Five vacancies, and we have five.
And four of them are for a full three-year term. And one of them is for a two-year unexpired term.
Okay, all right, so basically, everyone's getting elected here.
We have six applicants for five seats.
But didn't we already, or we voted, or we voted Joanne in the beginning? Okay, okay.
So as, at the current, at the current rate, we're gonna have one person who won't have a seat here, unfortunately, which, I want to be honest with you, is always the worst part of this.
Mr. Carrera has a question.
Yes.
It's not more of a question, it's a, it's probably protocol and how it should work. The incumbents have put their names to another application to continue on in that position. Do you know what I mean? So there's those incumbent positions, and then there's the two new people. So they should be for the fill-in position, because the other ones filled it out with the, with the idea that they're not gonna fight for a two, a two, they're gonna go for the full-term one, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I still think.
You don't vote it as a slate, because that's a little tricky, bless you. But you can vote them because they didn't say, I'm going for the, the fill-in spot, because they probably didn't, they might have known that somebody stepped out, but, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Yeah, apologies for not having to devise a slightly more sophisticated way to address this particular vote, but is Mr. Town Manager?
I think Mr. Carr is 100% correct, and I don't think he's recommending we vote it as a slate. All he's saying is that the incumbents.
Yeah.
Applied for a specific position, therefore, we should vote on them for that specific position. The position that opened up later on due to a resignation, the toss-up should be between the two people for that position.
Fair enough. So then the next vote would be to, to, for Eileen Kirchtorfer for a three-year term.
Second.
So Mr. McCrisky?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Mr. Carrera?
Aye.
And, no, it's not, sorry, it's not a public hearing, so there's not, this is an open meeting, but it's not a public hearing. And so Mr. Gito? So that is unanimous for Eileen Kirchtorfer. Next is Ellen Lash for a three-year term. Mr. McCrisky?
No.
No? Madam Chair? Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
And Mr. Gito?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So Ellen Lash, she have another three-year term. Boyd Walls for a three, three-year term. Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And we have a available seat of, it's a two-year term. We have two nominations, and we have five members here, so I'm just gonna go down the line and vote, vote for either Lauren Morris or for Jane Weiner.
Question before we go down that path, please. How many total spots are on the Council on Aging? Do we have that readily available? We don't have it, okay, so.
Is it nine, Joe?
I don't recall, Scott.
For some reason, nine sounds like it was.
It's full.
It's full.
Oh, it's always full, yeah.
It's full.
Right, so.
So I'm looking it up right now, see if we can find, find a list of members.
I would just like to ask my fellow board members if they, if it is their wish to expand it by one.
I'm not sure if we're able to have the authority to do that.
I don't think you're able to do that.
It's by the charter, so it's at capacity based on the charter.
So there are nine seats altogether.
Thank you.
Okay, so the vote is for the two-year term, and it will be either Jane Weiner or for Lauren Morris. We'll start with Mr. McCrisky.
Lauren Morris.
Madam Chair?
Let me just talk to this. This is a very difficult decision because we have Ms. Morris, who's a nurse, who has really focused on the age, the senior population. Then we have Ms. Weiner, who's actually attended meetings and such, and she's focused on the senior population as well. Both are well-spoken, both are passionate about it. I think I'll just have to go with Ms. Weiner.
Thank you. Mr. Carrera?
Lauren Morris.
Lauren Morris. And Mr. Gito?
Mitch Weiner.
Mitch Weiner. And my vote is for Lauren Morris. Ms. Weiner, my apologies, as I said, I really very much appreciate the application. It's very important people be willing to step up. We do have other vacancies, and if there's, if you have interest in any of those, I would really love for, to be able to talk to you or to be able to provide, you know, some, some help to help fill those. some help to, to help fill those. And I, I, this is honestly, the, literally the worst part of, of, of being a Select Board member for me, is, is when someone wants to volunteer and put their time and effort into the town to, to, to tell them, "No." And so, my apologies for that. But Ms. Morris, thank you very much for applying, and you have a, a two-year term. Thank you very much.
Can I?
Mr. Carrera?
To Gene, this doesn't preclude you from doing your good work that you're still doing. Spaces open up sometimes and, and you'll be sitting in the right spot. It's no reflection on what you've done or what you haven't done, it's, it's just, sometimes it's the roll of the dice, but I, I thank you.
The, next, sorry, go ahead.
I would like to recognize, out of order, I would like, even though this is not a public hearing, Ms. Morris.
So when I became interested in this position, I went on the website...
Would you sit down and be near, near the mic? Thank you.
Please state your name and your address.
Lauren Morris, Bradford Street. So when I went on the website, it gave the names of everybody on the board, and it was one vacancy. So if somebody retired on the board, I'm curious as to why there's not two vacancies. No, there was a vacancy back in April, when I originally applied.
We can get back, definitely get back to you about that, you know...
Okay, so just, I just want to put that bug in your ear, because there, there was a vacancy, one vacancy, it said right on the website, and that's what I was going for, but then you just said that someone retired, so, I don't know, just letting you know that.
Thank you, Mrs. Morris.
Thank you very much. So the, the vacancy is from Christian Jones Powell. She does not show up on the Council on Aging website, but there is a, a single vacancy, vacant position, which I'm, I'm assuming is hers, but there's always the possibility that their information on the website might be inaccurate, there might be something else we're missing, there might be some element, so I just ask, Jilda, would you mind just looking in to, to confirm that we don't have any additional vacancies on the Council on Aging?
Can we take a motion that there is and we appoint as one?
What was that?
I say, can we take a motion that if there is a vacancy, then we appoint as one?
No, I think we just, we just hold off, let's see. Because I don't think there is, but, so the next, next item is the Equal Opportunity Committee. We have two vacancies, two incumbents, and we have a, a new member who would like to, to join as well. We'll start off with the very top of Maggie Juisty, if you're available.
Thank you very much.
It's great seeing you again. Please give us your name, and I know you're looking to continue to serve on this board, and just tell us a little bit about your interest in continuing to serve.
Sure, Maggie Juisty, 66 Stratford Ave. I've been part of the S E O C for the past couple of years, and I would love to continue on. I make an effort to be present and available for the meetings, and I enjoy the collaboration that I have with the committee, and we're working to make Stoughton the most welcoming community, community possible, and I'd enjoy to continue to work on those efforts.
Excellent. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Nice seeing you again.
Thank you. The next applicant, Jacqueline Hardy Lassiter. Is she present or online? Okay, so next is Betty Sabree. Yeah, good seeing you again.
Hi, it's Betty Sabree, 35 Ronald Wayne, Stoughton. It's been a privilege and a great sense of responsibility that I serve on the Stoughton Committee on this, this S E O C. I've been a member of the committee for two years, and I'm, I'm really, really grateful to bring area of expertise, it's exciting and challenging work. Our subcommittee is responsible for creating a space for difficult conversations and formulating recommendations to the Select Board, and I seek your reappointment for the position.
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Nice seeing you again.
Okay, we have three, sorry, two seats and three applicants. I'll just open it up for any nominations for those, those two vacancies.
I'd like to nominate Maggie Juisty.
Okay.
And I'd like to nominate Betty Sabree.
Any other nominations? Seeing none?
Motion to close.
Yeah, perfect. So we have a motion to close the...
Just on this group?
Yeah, so we'll go ahead and go take that vote. Mr. McCrisky? This is closed nominations.
So we've got two.
We've got two seats and we have, the two incumbents have been, have been nominated.
Right, and I would vote for both, both the incumbents.
Yeah, perfect.
Simple as that.
Second?
So this is just close, close the nominations.
This is to close the nominations? You sec...
Second.
Okay, and then the vote to close the nomination was at a yes?
Yes.
And I vote yes to close the nomination?
Okay, I vote yes as well.
Yes.
Mr. Gino?
Yes.
Perfect. So then we have two seats and two vacancies. And Mr. McCrisky had a motion to appoint these, these two applicants to the two open vacancies.
That's my motion.
And we have a second?
Second.
Excellent, so Mr. McCrisky?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
I'm just looking bad to call you something else, I don't know why. I forget your name or something.
Just don't call me late for dinner.
Mr. Gino?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Maggie, Betty, thank you so much for, for your work on the, on the committee, I'm also on it, and you both have been such outstanding participants, and it's just a pleasure to know you both, so I'm, I'm really glad to be, continue to work with you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
See you at the next meeting.
And be well. And I think that gets us to the end, I don't think we have any other, oh, sorry, we also had a, the Planning Board currently had, has no applicants and there's one...
Excuse me, Vice Chair Cavey, I don't know if Mr. Zoll knows that he was reappointed. I didn't...
...notified me, and thank you for your work.
Congratulations.
You're welcome. Thank you very much for your service, thank you, Mr. Zoll.
Thank you very much.
...fifty minutes, please? Because that's all we have.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Uh, yes.
Madam Chair, when we advertise for the, I believe, Planning Board, I would ask that we also include Brockton Area Transit. I am currently the, the liaison to that board, and as that is, as you would know, some of them, like the Norfolk County Advisory Board, are the selectmen or they're designated if the selectman couldn't serve. My work-life and everything that's going on, I have the Advisory Board for Norfolk County, which has taken way more time than I thought it would, I thought I could manage them, but unfortunately, I haven't been able to attend all of the meetings of Brockton Area Transit, and I believe that it's a, it's a crucial board, so we should have some people there that are, that are knowledgeable on mobility for seniors, because they're doing a lot with dial-a-bat and transportation needs, you know, the makeup of the community, knowing about, you know, people's commuting, so if, I would ask that we place that on the list as well to advertise, and see if we get people that are experienced in transportation on it, or senior citizens, senior services, you know, we, we need to have an advocate there to get better transportation for our seniors, both in paratransit, senior citizens, you know, dial-a-bat, as well as the regular bat line that comes through the town, you know, so it's good to have somebody, if we can find a senior, it's a good thing to have a senior on that board. I think it would make a big difference for the makeup of that right now, so, that's my two cents, thank you.
Perfect.
So we would have to advertise for that, so, Jilda, thank you so much for doing that.
So currently we have, though we have no, we did not receive an application for the Planning Board by our deadline. It has been the policy of the board in the past to consider applications to come in later, or to consider applicants who are even here, present, who are interested in positions. My understanding is that Lauren Morris put an application in for the Planning Board. I wanted to, to, two things, check with Ms. Morris to see if she's interested in pursuing that, so if she's signaling yes, also to see if the board is interested in taking up that application at this time, or if, if they would like to follow some other route.
I, I don't see that in the paperwork, Mr. Vice Chair Cavey.
Yeah, we, we, we do have, have it available, but it wasn't in our package.
It's not in our package?
Right, and it's after the deadline, and the past practice of the board has been, you know, unless there was a vacancy and we had everything, but all the applications, when we've done that in the past, all the applications were completed during that timeframe. Anything that was late, we took up at a different time, so it, I think it's, we have to keep with the past practice, re-advertise, but of course, Ms. Morris' application would be automatically put into that, that thing, so, just to cover it, because that's the way we've done it in the past, because it gives everybody in town transparency, you know, it gives another bite at the apple, so I'd, I'd rather see us stick to that.
Your institutional knowledge, I, I rely on typically, I know in the last couple of times we've done it, there's been a little bit of shuffling around at the end to try to, to try to fill seats.
But most, from what I recall though, Steve, is I believe all the applications came in before the deadline. It's not like, I don't recall if we took anybody that wasn't in on time and gave them a spot, so, I just, you know, again, times are changing, you know, and I think that, you know, we need to, you know, even if there's any doubt, I feel comfortable just re-advertising, taking the application, it automatically goes in, then we can say, listen, an application come in after the deadline, but we advertised, still there was only one, or whatever, and we move forward. This way here, there's no doubts, you know, because we all know what goes on, you know, and, and how people will always question it. I think it's always the best thing that we don't even show the mere appearance of anything that wasn't consistent. That's my thought process.
So if it's, if it's okay with everybody to just kind of put this to a vote, that we, that we, the, the motion would be to, I'll, I'll just make the motion to kind of make it simple, make a motion to, to table this, to re-advertise, and then to take up this application, and then any other applications that may or may not, you know, may or may not come in, once...
I would just make the motion to put it out, to advertise, I wouldn't table anything, because once you put it out, set a, set a date on how long you're going to leave it, and then the second it's ready, just throw it in front of us. It's not going to take long.
So, Mr. Carrer's motion is to...
The motion is to re-advertise Joe's and the Planning Board for...
What about the Open Space Committee? What about the Self-Help, Inc. Committee?
If we didn't, any, any committee that didn't have any...
If there's vacancies on them, we include them as well.
Exactly, so that's good, Lou, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Yeah, so the motion is to re-advertise any, any appointments for which there are vacancies, and for which we did not receive an application by the deadline, and then we'll, we'll re-advertise and then, and vote on that at a future meeting.
Yeah, I think that's the best way to go, because I believe we have alternate positions on the zoning board as well.
Yes. There's five and you only got one, so you got four, four alternates, and that's the best board to be on, let me tell you, you learn a lot of stuff there.
I know, I know, it really is.
Yeah, so, so that's why, I think it's better to say, any boards with vacancies be re-advertised. What is that typical, what do you, we put out, 45 days for the applications to come in?
No, only on the Board of Registitors do we need 45 days.
Okay, what are we doing on, on these, 30 days?
So you've got the actual ad right here of the positions, we're going to make the amendments, Joe, to, to, for your request, and I believe the Planning Board is already on there.
So this is the advertisement for the, the future?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, so yeah, so this would be, the, the interviews would be on the July 5th meeting.
Okay, okay, no, that's good.
So it'd be, yeah, exactly a month.
July 5th, nobody's getting a break?
Yeah, so then, I, I apologize. Yeah, so this, this is, this is the advertisement that will be, be put out, it's, it looks like, applications will be open, the application deadline is Wednesday at noon, June 28th, and, and then we'll be conducting interviews on July 5th for these positions. It's the Board of Registitors, which we'll probably have to move that one out of here, but it would be the Commission on Disabilities, there's two three-year terms, Constable, five three-year terms, Council on Aging, there's one, but that's, we'll be removing that, because we fill that tonight, Cultural Council, one three-year term, Open Space Committee, one three-year term, Planning Board, one five-year term, Self-Help, Inc., one three-year term, and Zoning Board of Appeals, alternate, four one-year terms.
Plus the amendments we discussed this evening.
Perfect.
And also, I think it's worth our while to talk about our process, because I heard one gentleman say that his term lapsed because he didn't know, and in the recent past, the Clerk's Office would notify, you notified everyone, this go-round, you notified everyone whose term expires.
She did.
Okay. Also, if someone is, if someone leaves a vacancy and then someone fills a position mid-term, right, but, and they stay on, let's say, for two years, they automatically go and sync with the common anniversary date, and they don't know that they do it, they believe that their term ends the day that they started, if it's two-year term, two years from the date that they started, unknowing to them that their term actually ends June, July timeframe, so who notifies them that it, it syncs up with the other boards, commissions, and committees?
If it's a, an appointment of this board, it comes from our secretary.
Exactly right. Madam Chair, every, every person who gets sworn in is made aware of their term and the end of their term, whether it's a partial or full term, but I listened to Jilda for the last week and a half call every single person who had an expiring term, both before the advertisement and after been advertised, just to confirm that they did not want to reapply, or if they did want to reapply, they owed us a letter by a certain date. So it is the responsibility of our office to notify everybody, and I can tell you firsthand that that was done.
And then, with that said, whose responsibility is it to update the website? Because there was some discrepancy on how many vacancies there actually are. What are the real vacancies, whether someone retired or just, what's the number?
Our office does that as well. I'm not sure there's been a discrepancy as much as there's been a misunderstanding.
Yeah, yeah, it, it very well be, may be correct, we just have to verify that.
Trust with verify, right?
So there is a, a motion to, to re-advertise these positions, has it been seconded?
I'll give you a second on that.
Okay, so I'll make the motion.
It's your motion now, so I'm giving you a second.
You got it, you got it. Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Gino?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So these will be re-advertised, and the last item, we're so fast. Madam Chair, you have the, you have the mic, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we move off of the applications, I was just going through the end of the document and came across one that we'll be acting on, I guess, at a later date, is that it's not complete, from what I recall, from last year. There is in the application, unless it's different for renewal, is, there's nowhere in here where it shows me that the person is actively engaged with a firm that requires the services. I don't see the, the sheet that lists people of stature in the community, one that had to be an attorney, if you recall, we had that issue...
Yes, I do.
...a couple of years ago. This application doesn't have any of that. Now, I don't know if the application under the law has changed, but I do not believe, and I won't vote for giving anybody a constable unless there's a reason, and I see the reasons here is not, it's not up to us to be providing part-time jobs. I mean, if they're engaged with a legal firm that needs their service and they have used them, or they've got a commitment in, in, in a letter that says, "We will be utilizing this person's services as a, as a constable," so this is missing a lot from what I'm used to seeing, and through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Coulter, is that the chair... seeing, and, through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Coulter, is that the chair remembers specifically that there was an application that came in, you know, and it was a mess, and I offered to work with the gentleman, and we, we did get everything resolved, and it doesn't show, you know, some other things in here. So it's, it's usually, if I believe it was like, ended up being like a seven-page document, so...
Through you, Madam Chair, Mr. McCrisky, are you referring, just so I understand, to the form of the application, or the substance that the applicant is putting on the application?
Well, there's no forms for the information that's required to be in the application for constable, so...
Okay.
This, this what I'm looking at right now, it may have been, it's a lot neater than I remember seeing, so it might have been retyped. There's a couple different types of font in here, which kind of indicates possibly that this was rescaned, and it didn't have all the documents, you know, to create the, the PDF, but again, you know, because I see one that's got a little X in the bottom right corner, there's margins here, so it's definitely, this has been rescaned, and, but again, it's missing, it's missing a lot.
A lot of questions.
A lot of questions, yes.
Got it, got it.
There's three people that have to be known in the community, that vouch for the character of the person applying, they have to list the legal entities that are using their authority as a constable, because right now, the way that this application fits is we're gonna have, if we allow this type of an application, and we say, "This is what is okay before we'll appoint you," we'll have people in here looking for badges left and right, you know, just to get one. That's not a good enough process. We need somebody that is gonna be utilizing that, you know, to serve notice, as you know, through, you know, terminations, or civil process, evictions, things like that, you know, or serving people for evictions, so, there's a reason that you need to be a constable, not just to throw a badge in your wallet and walk around.
Got it, we'll take a close look at that...
Okay, thank you.
Bring it back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along to item number eight, traffic improvements, Walnut Street, Pleasant Street, Plain Street. Mr. Tisdale, our...
Before my...
Enter. Sure, sure, Mr. Carrera, before you get started, Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Carrera.
I had brought up a street that I was interested in, and I was told that I couldn't talk about it because it was not on the agenda, and it's a, it's a serious problem, and I asked it to be put on an agenda, and it hasn't found its way on yet, and then when I saw this, I was kinda a little taken back, that it would have been nice. Now, as a selectman, the street water and sewer commissioner, I do have the right to bring it up if it's a thing of safety, and I'll be taking it up after Mark goes through what, what he has to do, and then I'm gonna say what I want, and then that's the way it's gonna be, and we're not gonna make a big deal out of it, because it's a dangerous situation, and it's a business that's in Canton that's taking advantage of it, and I'll, I'll get to it after Mark does his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, thank you very much. Jelda, if you could pull up the PowerPoint? All right. All right, good evening, Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager and Director of Development Services, Town Engineer. Tonight we got updates on the, for the board on three projects that you're well aware of. There are some changes to a couple of the projects that you actually approved prior, and we'll get to those changes and the reasons why for them in a bit. Next slide, Jelda? All right, the three projects are Walnut Street improvements near Low Avenue, Plain Street, if you remember, a couple months ago, a few residents came in, had some complaints about a dangerous curve on that street, and a few accidents that occurred there, and Pleasant Street at Low Avenue. All right, the first project at Walnut Street, you're all familiar with this, this is the project that went to town meeting, got the approval for funding, came to your board prior to that for approval. I won't get into all the details of the whole project at this point, because your board already, already approved the project, but one of the key points on this project was the excessive speed on this road. It's a very wide road, we're trying to narrow the road down, slow cars down, there are things we were doing, like bump outs, striping, and speed tables on that street. Next, next slide, Jelda? This is a aerial image of the street, of Walnut Street. The area we're focusing on tonight, this is called Alternative 1. The part that's changing from what you've already approved, because we've done a little more research, we've had some comments from the public, is the area where the bump out is. The bump out was proposed right near the, the crosswalk near Pierce Street, kinda near the Jones School. The bump out was proposed for a few reasons. It was to slow cars down, when you physically narrow a road down, cars tend to slow down. The speed table was gonna be proposed at the crosswalk, so that would be like a raised crosswalk, that would also slow vehicles down, and that was gonna be more of like a trial period type of thing, since it's our first speed hump in, in town, we were just gonna kinda monitor it, see how it's working, if it wasn't working, not have speed humps anymore. And then the last part, to slow cars down, were some speed feedback signs at the upper and lower ends of Walnut Street, and along with some striping that appears to narrow the street down. The first, the first slide is Alternative 1. Again, everything else is staying the same, except for where the, the crosswalk is, where the, the bump out was proposed. If you remember, the original plan had a bump out that came out, it was gonna make the crosswalk a little shorter, which is good, so pedestrians don't, yeah, there's shorter time to cross the, the road, so a shorter distance, right, so it's safer for pedestrians to cross. The bump out was gonna be right at that point. We also have bike lanes on the street, because bikes are coming down, we had to design the bump out in a way there's, where there's bike ramps, so, bikes are coming down the roads, it's a straight road, you come onto the bike ramp that goes up the bump out, and then you come back down and go, continue on your way. For the avid bicyclist, they're aware of the, things like that, it's a very common feature in, in different communities, and Stowin' is our first one, right? So people who aren't avid bicyclists, or even avid bicyclists in Stowin', may not be aware how that works, so that bump out could have forced them into the street, okay, which is sort of a very unsafe situation. We're trying to make a safe, improve, you know, safety improvements, and to me, that, through some conversations with different people, we felt that we needed to kinda revise that approach. So, there's two alternatives. The first one would be pretty much no bump out, we're just narrowing the street down with striping, and providing a speed hump at the crosswalk. Again, all features that would slow vehicles down. This is not the recommended alternative, we spoke to the police department, engineering department, all those departments, and we would recommend Alternative 2, which is the next slide, which is essentially, we're providing a bump out, so exactly what we were doing before, but the bump out is designed in a certain way where the bikes stay straight, they're going down the road, there'll be, there'll be granite curbs on the edge of the road for the bump out, and the bike goes up the ramp, down the ramp, and back through to the other side. It's a straight ramp, so there's no going up to the bump out on the sidewalk and back down, it's just a straight ramp, and it's still a bump out, just designed a slightly different way. The way that bump out's designed doesn't allow for a speed hump there, because if we put a speed hump, now we got drainage concerns, and then we got like a, a ramp that goes up, goes down, and now we're going up a speed bump, it would just be a disaster. So, in order to keep the speed hump concept in place, which is also a good concept to slow cars down prior to getting to this crosswalk, which is actually an added benefit of not having the speed hump at the crosswalk, slowing cars down prior to the crosswalk, would be putting speed humps on each side of the, of the crosswalk. So instead of one speed hump at the crosswalk, we have one on each approach coming to the crosswalk, as you can see, so it's, it's a speed table, it's very flat, it's like the image on the lower left-hand corner. So vehicles traveling east have a speed hump, and vehicles traveling west have a speed hump. There's still a bump out on the crosswalk, you still have a new crosswalk, you still have those rapid rectangle flashing beacons, so when pedestrians cross, they push the button that's always been in the plans, and then the, the far east and west side of Walnut Street, we got the speed feedback signs proposed. So we would recommend Alternative 2, again, it's one of those borderline situations where, to me, I was like, your, your board approved this project, but you didn't really approve this exact part of it, so I wanted to come back to your board and make sure everybody was on the same page, so even you see two speed humps, as opposed to one, in a slightly different look to the speed, the bump out, you know why. So that's, that is Walnut Street. If you want, we can either discuss this, or I can talk about the other two projects all at once, and then have questions at the end. It might be simpler, since we're here, maybe take, take a vote on this one, and then move to the next one.
Let's vote as we go.
All right. So this is the end, this is the end of Walnut Street.
Do any board members have questions to Mr. Tisdale regarding the second speed bump, or just the reason, or the alternative, proposed alternative? Yes, Mr. Carrera?
Through you, Madam Chairman, to Mr. Tisdale. Mark, are they gonna be able to plow these?
Yeah, yeah, so, that's always been the issue in Stowin' about speed humps, right? This, so that's why we're doing a trial run here.
Where it's not all the way across the road, so the plow's not hitting and clearing, you got one that's like a ramp, and then one that's like a ramp, so it's, it's dropping down, is...
It's, it's only, it's only maybe a foot from the edge, the reason why it doesn't go all the way to the edge is, is for drainage purposes, obviously, to get the water to keep on flowing. I don't believe there'll be an issue. Again, the, another reason why I like these speed humps on each side, separate from, from where the bump out is, is because if there's something unforeseen consequence we don't know about, or something we just don't like, or something doesn't work here, we can just grind those suckers down, you know, just right, right down to the pavement, nice try, but we're not proposing this again. I spoke to DPW, I mean, they don't love it, but they're willing to try it, the police like it for, for safety reasons and slowing cars down, so I think it's worth a shot, trying these, because you don't know how many times people come to our department asking about some speed humps on different roads, and if we don't try one, then I, I just don't have good data to, to kinda give, give back to them on why they, they do, or do, do not work, so, thanks.
Motion to approve option two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Gito? Mr. Gito says aye, Mr. Carrera?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cavie?
Yes.
And Mr. McCrisky?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So that one's done.
Thank you. All right, the next project is Plain Street. This was a, a project that came about, I believe, about a couple months ago, when a few residents came to one of your board meetings. Yep, it was actually, yeah, it was in Mr. Coulter's time here, so it was definitely within two or three months ago. Plain Street, the issue on this street was excessive speeds again, there's a, there's a pretty good crash history, and a very serious crash history, it's not just small crashes, they're, they're pretty serious crashes, and sight distances along Plain Street. As you can see, this picture right here, it's straight, and then you, you can't even tell the road actually curves, but it, it really does to the left, further up the road, until you get on the, on top of the hill. And the way the utility poles are, if you look at those utility poles on the left-hand side, they got lights on them, there's actually one that crosses the street at the curve, so if you're not paying attention, you're kinda just looking at the lights, it almost looks like the curve at nighttime bends the other way, but it actually burns, bends left. So the, the lighting and the poles and the geometry of the road and sight distances really confuse people, especially ones that are going at a pretty good clip on that road. Next slide, Jelda? This is an aerial image of, of that exact area, that, that other picture was taken from the left, looking easterly. We've gone through this with the police department, various versions, we've, we've met up with several residents in that area, we had like a little roadway safety audit, met them, walked around with them, got their feedback on what they thought would, would solve the problem out there. Even through, through email, recently, we've adjusted some sign locations and things like that, to get it right where they, where it needs to be to make everybody happy. What we're proposing here is a series of signs, essentially to, to solve this problem. Anytime you go around a dangerous or tight curve, usually you see those, those dynamic curve signs, right, the ones with the arrows, usually you see two of them in a row, we've actually got a series of three here, the double-faced signs with just the arrow, I'll, I'll show you a picture of that in a second. We also are proposing a dynamic curve warning system, and I'll get into the details behind that in, in a second, and we are gonna freshen up the, the markings on the road over there that, that have one out, the center lines and the fog lines on, on Plain Street. Next slide, Jelda? All right, so this is the same picture you saw before, just with the signs placed on it, superimposed on the, on the street view. So the first sign you see on the, on the, on the far right is the dynamic curve warning system. This is a solar-powered sign, there's a radar that comes out of it, doesn't, doesn't go back to the police department or anything, it's just radar technology, so any car going, if the speed limit is 25, any car, you can set it, say, 30 miles an hour, anything going over 30 miles an hour, the sign starts flashing. Signs that just always flash, people get used to, and they, they serve no purpose, so if you're just driving up, and now the thing starts flashing at you, oh, you know, I gotta slow down a little bit, right? So that's the first layer of defense here, relatively inexpensive sign, but it's gonna serve a, a great purpose. There'll be one of these signs on each approach, so there's two signs proposed like this. As you can see, further up the road, we'll have a static dangerous curve warning sign, ones you see on a lot of curves, dangerous curves on different streets. Most recently, we, we put some of these up at Island Street on that project. There'll be three of those in a row, and then, once again, the, the pavement markings will be freshened up, just because they're worn out around the curve area. Those will be the three improvements to this area. I believe the most, if not all, the residents in that area approve of this type of, of approach. The police department's reviewed it, likes it, and we, we feel it's, it's gonna greatly improve the situation on Plain Street. That's the Plain Street project.
There've been a lot of deaths on this curve as well, not just injuries.
Correct. Yeah, very bad, very bad accidents.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cavie?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. That's the second one down.
All right.
Pleasant Street?
The last one is, is Pleasant Street at Low Avenue. Next slide, Jelda? All right, this area, we're, we're all familiar about, this came about, there was an accident, I think it may be one or two winters ago, it wasn't last winter.
A half ago, I think.
Yeah, yeah, right. So there was an accident there, a resident came to town, came, came to your board, voiced concerns about the, the, the safety issues in this area, your board had a directive to, to look at this, and then that's what we've done. This area has, obviously, there's a poor crossing, the crosswalk's angled, it's not striped well, it's not compliant with current standards. There's vehicles that park in, park in this intersection, as you can see, they're right on top of the crosswalk quite, quite often. There is speeding in this zone too, quite, quite frequently, because the road's pretty wide, and there's a, there's a lack of a school zone in this area, and kids do utilize this area in this crosswalk. Next slide. This is our proposed alternative, this, there is one alternative here, and I'll just go through what we're, what we're proposing here. The first thing is obviously just pavement markings, the slow cars down, I believe there's 12-foot lanes in Pleasant Street now, we're gonna narrow them down to 11, which is still a standard-sized lane, which creates larger shoulders, so if, even if people are walking on the side of the road, there's a larger shoulder, so they're protected for more distance from where the cars are traveling. It'll slow, obviously slow the cars down too. We will realign, install the crosswalk with a pedestrian crossing a head sign. That crosswalk right now, as you can see in the aerial imagery, it's, it's angled, which means there's a longer distance, and takes more time for pedestrians to walk, right? It's to show... It's a shorter distance if everything's perpendicular to one another. So we're going to re-stripe that per the town standards of a crosswalk, which is that Continental style, going right across the street. There'll also be solar-powered rapid rectangle flashing beacons like the ones in the, in the square, and we have seen several of those spots around town that seem to be very successful. So when somebody, you know, it's a mid, sort of like a mid-block crossing, so if, if a child or somebody is crossing the street, they hit the button, the lights flash, alerts all the cars that somebody is, is utilizing the crosswalk. We also will install solar-powered speed feedback signs like on Walnut Street, same technology, solar-powered, with the proper speed limit. Obviously, that will be before and after the, the crosswalk. And then we'll do some, some signs for, do not block the intersection. Obviously, that may not solve the problem of people blocking the intersection, but it will help improve that situation. And lastly, we'll have wayfinding signs for people looking for the school. As you can see, the ones that are blue, it says Da Elementary School. Next slide, Jilda. This is a blow-up of that exact same area, showing the crossing enhancements. The rapid rectangle flashing beacon is the unit shown on the right. It'll go on each side of the crosswalk. Where the crosswalk goes, we'll be rebuilding the handicap accessible ramps. They'll be brand-new. The, the, the street across the street, I believe it's Bennett Street, I think it's called, that just, Bento. Oh, sorry, Mark, I didn't see it back there. The Bento Street, that just got newly paved, so we won't be changing anything over there. We'll just be constructing, we won't be changing the curb lines, we'll just be reconstructing the, the, the ramp over there. So the ramp on Pleasant Street side and on Bento Street side will be reconstructed to be ADA compliant, new crosswalks with our Continental-style crosswalk, the town's approved in the past. It's the most visible crosswalk from a, from a longer distance. And we'll have the, as I, as I mentioned before, the, the speed feedback signs, which aren't shown in this picture because they're just outside the, the view, to, to slow the cars down. Next slide, Jilda. This is the same area, just down the street, towards Central Street, just shows the narrowing of the road. Again, it's, it's, we're pretty much narrowing the lanes by one foot, which seems like a small amount, but it, it will slow cars down. People tend to slow down when there's a narrower, narrower lane, just like the same concept when you're on a highway in this construction project, and this median's put in place, our construction barriers. People tend to slow down when the road appears narrower. Next slide, Jilda. The same, this shows the extents going in the opposite direction, up to Pleasant Avenue. That's where we're going to stop the striping for this, this particular project. So we're pretty much going the same distance from each direction from the crosswalk on the narrowing of the, the lanes and the re-striping. I think that's it, Jilda. I don't know if there's any other slides. And that's, that's it. That's the project for, for Low Avenue. We did do a roadway safety audit with this with the Old Colony Planning Council. You know, various stakeholders were out there, police, engineering, Mr. Zaman, who is a major stakeholder in this area, the schools were out there, and that's how we came about with these plans. It started off with the roadway safety audit, and then we took that to the next level with our, with our actual engineers.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. McCrisky?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cavie?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mark.
All right.
And that ends our agenda. Oh.
Motion to adjourn.
Wait just one minute, Mr. Carrera raised his hand for...
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Mr. Carrera?
Thank you. This is Willow Street. It runs from Page Street to Turnpike. And as we know, Target is the hugest intersection next to the 138 Central Street intersection. And trucks are supposed to go to the Target intersection and to Turnpike Street to go down to the industrial zone that's down further. But the trucks are smart. They're taking a, a left on Page. All the other ones are coming in the other way from 138 down roads that they're not supposed to be traveling on and cutting through to get to Willow Street so that they can go over to Turnpike Street and avoid the massive wait for the light changes up there. I went to look at a job, and I almost got the door taken off my truck by a triaxle dumpster truck. And I said to the, the guy, I says, wow. He goes, pay no attention, it happens all the time. I go, what are you talking about? He goes, it starts at like 5:00 in the morning, and they're, they're up and down, and up and down. So another one, when I was all done, I followed them. Up the street, up to Page Street, took a right, went into Canton, took a left on Indian Lane, went all the way out and jumped out at the Sinai and went to 138, and then headed for the 128. So there's a big dump zone down there. People are bringing everything in. I don't want to call it a C and D place, but there's a lot of stumps going in, debris, broken concrete, and they're, they're just, I don't think Willow Street is 22 feet wide. That's how narrow it is. There's no sidewalks. There are, that place is coming back, there's children moving in, there's different families moving in, and, and it's a danger. And I don't think we have to put truck counters out there or anything like that. I think we should just apply for a, a, a no-truck traffic, set the time on it, or whatever some of them say, no traffic from here to here. I think we should just, it's not a cut-through. It's not a proper cut-through, it's dangerous. The road winds, there's chunks of ledge that stick out and are into the edge of the roadways. It's, it's not a street made for, for dump trucks. So I, I'd ask that we put signs up and alleviate that, and let them go to the intersection that's appropriately lit, timed, and, and allows that.
Madam Chair.
Thank you for that update. Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I agree with Mr. Carrera, but the, I believe that, from past practice, is we have to, in our role as street commissioners, post a public hearing. I would suggest we do what we've done in the past, is have the police safety officer go down and give us a report on that, as then we would hold a, a public hearing as street commissioners to, to entertain the truck exclusion, which, as you know, goes to Mass Highway, and that's where we usually have to, you know, get creative with them, you know?
I don't think it's going to be too creative on the street.
Well, you know, it just bothers me, Scott, because to me, we shouldn't have to ask Mass Highway...
You're right.
You know, what goes on on our roads, you know? But they have that right. They can't fix their own darn roads, never mind worry about ours, but we have to do that as a part of the process. But I agree with you, and we should stop that process. So I'd say that if, that's the motion I would make, is that we request a report by the police safety officer. Once that report comes in, that the chair take appropriate action to get that scheduled for a public meeting.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. McCrisky?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cavie?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Is there anything else that we're going to have to do on that in order to be, to convince people that, in fact, we're serious about this?
I would, I would put a, a request into the police department, Mr. Gito, and ask that they step up enforcement down there to make sure that these trucks, although at this time they're not prohibited, they should be adhering to the speed limits and so forth.
Well, then, we should do that. I guess, more, more to the point, do we need to get any more data in, or do we need to have anyone, like folks from OCPC do traffic counts or anything else in the longer run to do, to, to move things ahead and get, and, and get all of the, the things in order? Because if we need to eventually do that, we ought to start doing it now, because I, I believe that this really is a serious problem, and we don't want to do it a little bit at a time.
Yes, we agree, Mr. Gito. Mr. Tisdale just walked back to the table, and he has additional comments.
I think Mr. Gito has a valid point there. I think you can hold your public hearing, address the truck exclusion that you, you want a truck exclusion there, but that will ultimately get approved by Mass DOT, and unfortunately, they will want a road safety audit done, they'll want the traffic counts and all that kind of stuff before they approve the truck exclusion. I can reach out to Old Colony Plans, Planning Council, they can do a lot of that. We may be, we may have to hire out one of our traffic engineers to do the, do the counting. All minor stuff we can get addressed internally.
All right.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you so much, Mark, and if there is no further business for our select board, I accept a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second.
All in favor of Mr. McCrisky?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cavie?
Aye.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Good evening, everyone, and see you next time. Thank you.